All right, good afternoon. It is 12:30 on this date of September the 13th. We will now call City Council into session. And at this time, City Council will move to executive session for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding the following. Pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement and to hold consultation with the attorney under 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, and personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. We will be in recess for executive session. In session from executive, for a called executive session, it is September the 13th. And we have gone through executive session items one through 1.4. We are now convening an open session for the remainder of our called City Council meeting. At this time, we will begin with our ceremonial items, and I will call Executive Pastor Jeff Oldham with Melanie Park Church forward. If you would all please stand.
Thanks, Mayor Payne and City Council members. Thanks for the opportunity just to share an invocation with you guys this afternoon. And we at Melanie Park Church want to just say thanks for all that you do for our community. We really appreciate it. Let's pray. Father God, you are sovereign and holy. You're the God of all nations, you're the God of all people. Father, we come before you with grateful hearts for your kind and generous ways. We are thankful that you don't leave us grasping to know what would be helpful for the flourishing of our country, our state, or our local communities. Lord, you remind us that we walk in your spirit and that we have the capacity and the ability to love you and our neighbors deeply, to walk with a joyful soul, to live in peace with all people, to be patient, kind, gentle, and humble, even when we don't see eye to eye with each other. You remind us to serve each other well, to lay down our own wants and desires for the greater good of the community. So we're thankful, Lord, for our leaders that you have put in place to govern, steer, and lead our city. Thank you for our mayor, our City Council members, our civil servants, our schools, the administrators, teachers, students, and parents. We are grateful, Lord, for our law enforcement officers, our firefighters, for our judicial system, and the citizens of our wonderful city. May we follow your ways, Lord, by praying for and submitting to our local government. We are incredibly grateful for your sacrificial and thoughtful servant leadership. So as we turn this meeting over to you, Lord, may our city officials be guided by your truth, your grace, and your mercy. Many are the plans of man, but you, oh Lord, order our footsteps. So plan, Lord, order our path in a way that helps us reflect your goodness in all things. I pray this in the sweet and gentle and beautiful name of Jesus. Amen. Yeah, thank you, guys.
Please, Lord, we say our prayers to the United States and Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We will now next move to citizen comments. Any citizen wishing to appear in person before a regular meeting of the City Council regarding any matter posted on the City Council agenda shall complete the sign-up form. Citizens are provided an opportunity to make comments and express a position on agenda items. Any comment received as the nature of asking a question will be referred to an appropriate member of the city staff for response. Just as a way of reminder, if you have a comment and your name is called, please come forward, state your name, and give your address, and you will have three minutes and I believe a 30-second timer by Ms. Courtney Pass. All right, I first have Bishop Phil Binings. Sir, you may come forward.
Just want to say thank you for this opportunity, the mayor and council persons. I would say this is the day that the Lord hath made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. This is a good opportunity that we're here to rejoicing, and we want to make comment on item 5.26. And we just want to just say thank you in advance for any community support and infrastructure that's being considered. And we just think that is just such an opportunity to be a blessing to the community, the city in partnership with the community, and providing for affordable housing. And so we, by faith, we're just saying thank you again for the awesome work that everyone is doing. And our prayer team, I want you all to know that we pray for you all regularly, if not every day. We rise up at 5:00 a.m., 5:30, 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. for prayer. And we remember the city leadership. And I think that it's so awesome that to see the response and how God is blessing our community. And we look forward to working with the community and being a blessing to everyone in the community. God bless you, and thank you again.
Thank you, sir, very much. Next, we have Mr. Hernandez.
Yeah, Adam Hernandez, 7400 Block of Avenue X. Good afternoon to the council and Mr. Mayor. I'm here to talk about two of the items on the agenda. I'll talk about the one y'all are going to deal with last first, which is the proposal to do the no new revenue rate. I did get to see a little bit of the last meeting on video, and there was a couple of things mentioned that I would like to offer rebuttals to on behalf of the citizens who can't be here today. And then I'm also here to speak on to the budget, in particular, the pool issue, for many citizens who cannot be here today. The no new revenue rate is a bad idea. It was a bad idea on the campaign trail. It's a bad idea now. It's a bad idea anytime you bring it up. And it was mentioned that you, Mr. Mayor, when you're speaking to lots of citizens, as you said, that they brought this to you. You and others are members of the Republican Party. I am not. But during campaign season, I was at more Republican events than all of you combined that are in that party. And I only heard about that from you, Mr. Mayor, and a few other people. I've not heard that from anybody else, so I'd like to offer that rebuttal. The other side of that is, is that it leads to exactly what we're dealing with, which with the pools and other things. The street bond was brought up. We're asking people to pass a street bond, so we need to give them relief for that. We need to give relief to the so-called average citizen. Many people in this city don't even own a home, and many of them live in multifamily units. And I can guarantee you, people in those apartments' rent is not going to come down because of a no new revenue rate. In fact, they're probably going to continue to go up because our economy is great, and all of the sectors that make money for Lubbock are great. There's no reason to do this. And it sets us up for failure because we are growing at a rate that's greater than the state average. We are having literal historic growth in this city, and you're going to cap us off at the knees by doing a no new revenue rate, to not be able to pay for anything that may come up above and beyond what we have now. All right? So that's a bad idea. I'm sure you're, that's fallen on deaf ears, but that's okay. On the pools, there are two ways that we can fund these pools in reality where we sit at today. That's a citywide bond election, and unfortunately, that would not pass because, just to be frank, districts in four and five would vote that down. The other thing is, the city could move to do public improvement districts to get these pools done. I conveyed that to you all via email, including the city manager and others, and that was left on the table. And so we're leaving an option on the table as far as the pools. And when it usually comes to the more historic areas of our city, that's where we tend to not be able to find money. And I think it's very unfortunate, and about 85 to 90% of the citizenry that's on Facebook and in person have told me that they're against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Next, we have Gail Modrow.
Yes, I'm Gail Modrow, and I live at 5233 16th Street. And before I get to the matter that I came to protest today, I will say that this is most inconvenient time to have a citizen's comment when so few citizens can come. And I've been here since 1:45, and an hour later is when we are convening this meeting. So I'm already upset, but I'm here to protest the closing of most of the city pools. Splash pads are a delightful idea for young children, but splash pads present liability issues and are not a replacement for swimming pools. If the pools had been maintained, the current repair costs would be lowered. I had not been in a swimming pool for over 20 years. I participated in a Saturday Aqua Zumba class this summer at the Maxi Community Center. This class had the most participants of any program in the parks and recreation system, about 18 to 25, mostly older ladies. Although the City Council members have changed, I encourage the City Council to maintain more than one public swimming pool. Most Lubbockites do not have access to a pool except ones provided by the city. When the City Council tried to close the public libraries a few years ago because the City Council members did not have library cards, the community protested this idea. The public libraries remain open and, in my opinion, underfunded. Before the public library issue, citizens asked student council to close down payday lending loans, and the Lubbock banking lobby thwarted that attempt. I implore you to keep more than one swimming pool open this summer. As a former Dunbar librarian, I know that the May Simmons Pool was one of the few treats my students could enjoy in the summer. These students would not be able to get to the clap pool easily. Please reconsider your position on closing most of the city pools. Thank you for listening to my request.
Thank you, Ms. Modrow. All right, we next have Kirk Richardson.
I was not at the last meeting when my issue came up, but the property in consideration is at 134th and Frankfurt.
Mr. Richardson, would you go ahead and please state your name, your address, and then just give us a reference? I believe you're specifically talking about 6.3, correct?
Kirk Richardson. My home address, 6306 County Road 74, 75 in Lubbock. The item number referencing is 6.3. I guess at the last meeting, there were six nays and one nay. They asked me to show up today to answer questions on the reason for the nay. When I bought these properties, it was out of the city, out of the city limits. I built one building on one piece of the property, and then a few years later, we added another piece of, we added on to that building. And therefore, the property in question actually has part of the new building on it, and now we're wanting to add on to it. I guess it's being transitioned from a transition district to light manufacturing. There's many buildings around there that probably do a whole lot more manufacturing than what I do. Matter of fact, you probably have some of the same tools that we mainly use, a chop saw, a drill, and a tape measure. You know, we manufacture exterior patio shades, and we're just outgrowing our space, needing more space, and so we're adding an additional building, and therefore, most of it's going to be retail. Just down the road, two blocks, is affordable storage. Basically, they have the same frontage as I do, and I'll be doing the same thing as they are in terms of their, their frontage on Frankfurt Avenue. There's no, I think there's one home over there. I have also purchased the land right across from me. There are two dilapidated houses, which I will be mowing down to help make that a better-looking part of the city, anyway. Not sure what I need to do beyond what I've said. Do I need to stick around for the second reading? Is that how that works? Yes?
Yes, there'll be a second reading, yes.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Richardson. We will next move to agenda item four, which is the minutes from August 9th, regular and special City Council meetings, the work session, the August 16th and 17th bond election meetings, special City Council meetings called. If I could have a motion to approve those minutes?
Leave to approve.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by like sign. All right, motion carries for approval of 4.170. All right, we are next moving to the consent agenda. These are items that are routine or enacted by one motion without separate discussion in many instances. We have a few of these items that have been requested to be pulled from the consent agenda. My intention with approval of the council is to bring these out for discussion and then bring those back in for one vote if there's no objection to that. All right, the first agenda item we have, I believe we have a specific presentation on is agenda item 5.26. Is that correct, Mr. Atkinson?
Mayor, that is correct. Would ask Chief Fogerson to come forward to provide the presentation. We have Mr. Josh Flood in the audience as well, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Pleased to be before you this afternoon to present item 5.26 for your consideration. This is the first reading of a proposed ordinance amending Chapter 37, Article 37.01, related to permitted construction in our city's right-of-way to provide a penalty, a savings clause, and to provide for publication. I have Mr. Josh Flood, Construction Services Manager for the city, here with me to assist in answering any questions, and I have a brief presentation. If it pleases the council, I'll proceed. Give you a little background, the city of Lubbock is experiencing a high number of natural gas pipeline strikes by contractors operating in the right-of-way. We've had 78 occurrences year-to-date. 62 of those have been directly related to construction. 35 of the 62 were caused by contractor error. Many of these pipeline strikes are preventable by following best practices and applicable statutes, and these operations will continue for years as companies install underground communications infrastructure. Here's a little pie chart. You can see in blue the number of gas lines that were damaged due to contractor error at 57%, and then the number that were damaged due to other factors at 43%, so over half. The purpose of this proposed ordinance is to stop occurrences that are due to negligence and gross errors on the part of the contractors operating in the public right-of-way, and also to recover avoidable costs that are incurred by the city in instances where the damages could have been preventable by following best practices and applicable statutes. The hazards, of course, natural gas is a very useful commodity when it's handled appropriately, but it can be extremely dangerous in an uncontrolled release, and that's what we're talking about here today. There's danger right at the ignition point. The gas can travel farther away, distant from the ignition point, and gather in pockets where it becomes a hazard. And there's a danger of explosion if the gas infiltrates the sewer and accumulates in structures, which is often the case in most of these we've found. The mitigation time period itself is extremely dangerous because it can be hours before the gas is able to be shut off, and there's exposures to emergency personnel when monitoring the natural gas levels. We have to approach structures to make sure that they're, that they're not accumulating gas inside. And also, it causes fear and agitation with those people who are exposed and then evacuated. It can bring on medical conditions for them. Of course, there's disruption. These evacuations can sometimes go on overnight and longer. Loss of property use while people are evacuated. There's business loss if we should have to shut down a business while we're trying to control the gas. Major thoroughfares, partially or completely closed for extended periods. Delivery of city services for the period of the repair. Disruption of school activities, such as drop-off and pickup at recess. When these happen adjacent to a school, we have to have those folks sheltered in place, which of course is a major disruption for them. It also creates a diversion of emergency responders, which erodes our capacity for response to other emergencies. Excuse me. These incidents can be very expensive. The typical cost for the fire department when we respond to one of these is around $3,500 for time and equipment that's out there on the scene. Typically, we have two to three incidents per week, and the costs are very easy to determine for us down to the 10th hour. And this ordinance will help prevent damage to other city utilities as well because it's not only natural gas lines that are, that are being struck by these contractors. Some recent examples, back in May of this year, 82nd and Memphis, the fire department was out there for 16 hours. 82nd Street was closed for an extended period of time completely, and then partially for several days after that. We had to evacuate three blocks of homes, and many of those were, they had to go to a hotel and stay overnight. Then on June 7th and June 24th, Sixth Street and Seventh Street in Frankfurt, a block apart, two weeks apart, same company, which also caused evacuations and major traffic So in summary, we're looking to reduce the incidence of avoidable line strikes through this ordinance, increase public safety and the safety of first responders, reduce disruption for citizens, businesses, and emergency services, and also recover costs incurred by the taxpayers due to negligent operation. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, this may be something that's addressed more to Mr. Atkinson. The calculation of damages, can you go briefly into that and explain how the fee will be calculated towards these contractors? So when we have an incident, that we know what the fine or what that cost would be?
Certainly glad to do that. As the chief noted, and he's going to kind of flip back to there, Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA, has schedules for every piece of equipment. We have schedules for personnel. We have actual costs. You know, if you had to rent and bring out barricades, there's, there's an invoiced cost for that. So the idea behind this, and the fire department already logs in great detail any and ever response, all the equipment, all the personnel, any supplies, consumables that are used, any other city response that goes into that. Often, at least at the front, you have the Lubbock Police Department. We would typically have representatives from the Public Works Department. All of that would be logged once the determination was made that this was caused by negligence, not that it was because a line was mismarked or a line was discovered that no one knew was there. That's not what we're looking at. These are the cases where a contractor has been negligent in complying with the rules, and it has caused the public to incur danger, disruption, and cost. In that case, once it's determined, the cost will be put together, and that will become an invoice that is due from that contractor to the city, and they will not be able to take any more permits or to perform additional work until such is paid.
Thank you for that explanation. Ms. Joy?
I think Mr. Atkinson kind of touched on the fact that there is a way to locate these lines. Just for the people who are listening, what's the process for a contractor who's going to, who's pulled a permit for a particular location? What's the process for them to know where those lines are buried, particularly gas lines? Because we've all heard the, you know, call before you dig.
Yes, ma'am. Great question. I'm going to have Mr. Flood answer that because that is his area of expertise, and I don't want to get the steps out of order.
That's okay. Thanks.
Thank you all. So generally, once permit, pre-permit, we actually require them to call 811 and attach that 811 ticket to the permit request. The gas company will come out and locate those. We, Diane's crew, locate water, sewer, and stormwater. Gas company locates their infrastructure. There's multiple ways to do it. There's tracer wires, there's measurements. But once that's marked, then it's contractor's responsibility to verify those marks by means of potholing. Safe digging is what it's considered at that point. But that's, that's the general rule on earth, process on that.
So if they fail to follow that process, like you call it potholing, I think?
Yes, ma'am.
They fail to do that, and they rupture a line, then is that within your definition of negligence?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It is in Chapter 37 that they must pothole. So if they, and if we arrive, myself or Diane arrive on the scene, and it has not been potholed, locates have not been called, maybe they didn't get a permit, if they failed to follow the ordinance, that would automatically be grounds for implementing the fee on this or the, or the payback on this.
How many of these incidents occurred where a contractor did not have a permit?
We have really worked very hard on educating the contractors. We're actually very good. The contractors are good to get permits. If they don't, they start down a path to not getting a permit at all with us. And so we reach out to all the local contractors. We have pre-construction meetings with any of the new contractors in town, try to get them on the right foot. But once we leave, if they fail to follow the ordinance, that's, that's when we would implement this fee. Thank you.
Mr. McBrier?
So who actually makes the determination of the negligence? Do you?
Well, there'd be two, there'd be two factors in that. If there was an obvious violation of the ordinance, they didn't pothole, then yes, sir, we would go ahead and proceed with that. If there's questions on that, every gas strike is investigated by the Railroad Commission, and we would use their findings to designate whether or not this fee needs to be enacted.
Any other questions from these two gentlemen? All right, thank you, sirs.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Atkinson, I think we have 5.3, 5.13 and 5.14, which are business development resolutions, if you want to bring those in and discuss those together.
Certainly. Item 5.13, this is a resolution approving an incentive from the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance to WL Plastics. WL Plastics is an existing business. They're located on Drew Street, so you're immediately north of the airport in what we call rail port. WL Plastics is one of the country's largest manufacturers of polyethylene pipes, so the big pipe on the gigantic spools, often that's used for gas lines and other similar things. WL Plastics has been very successful in their short time here. They are now intending to expand their plant. The expansion project that WL Plastics has proposed would provide 95 new jobs. 38 of those would be at WL Plastics with an annual average salary of $49,000 each. The company will also spend $40 million on capital investment to construct the new facilities. That is for them. The incentive that comes to you is a recommendation from the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance Board of Directors is based on providing land upon which they can make the investment. So the land that is offered is 15 acres at the rail port that is considered rail-served. It is on one of the sightings. The 15 acres that we've just described are valued at just slightly over $1 million. 10 acres would go with that that is not rail-served. It actually lays to the side of the property. Those 10 acres collectively are valued at approximately $609,000. So the total incentive that has been recommended by the board is 25 acres in the rail port with a value of approximately $1.6 million. The lead of board did recommend this at their August 22nd board meeting. As you have seen in prior projects, there will be performance requirements associated with this. The company has to make, the investment has to provide the jobs. If not, there will be clawback potential. That's 513. Any questions, I'll take. If not, I can go to 514. If not, I can go to 514.
Ms. Joy?
Atkinson, I understand they have performance agreements and if they don't follow through, then you have what they call clawbacks, but how do you clawback land?
Ultimately, you can either require payment, you can cause them to pay for that, or it can be taken. And there is a project that closed at the rail port some number of years ago, that that has been in play on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
5.14, Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. 5.14 is also coming to you, recommended by the Board of the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance. This is an incentive to True North Steel. True North Steel is located in the southeast corner of Interstate 27 and the North Loop. It's what we all know as Beck Steel. True North, in their time in that facility owning it, they have also been very successful and they now seek to add an additional product line, which I understand would be focused on constructing tanks. True North is making a capital investment of $1.6 million, so that is the company's investment. They are adding a total of 38 new jobs at an estimated average salary of $44,700. The incentive that is being recommended is strictly a job creation incentive. It is in a capped amount of $95,000. The job creation incentives work by paying $500 per job that is created per year for five years. So the $2,500 per job is paid out over a period of five years. This one also is a very easy to monitor project. If the job exists at the beginning and the end, it qualifies for its yearly incentive and that carries out for five years again to the total of $95,000.
Ms. Joy?
So this is one where, when you talk about a clawback, if they don't hire the number of people that they have said they will hire, then you will no longer pay. Is that the way that works?
That is correct. At the measurement period, if 25 of the jobs exist, you would pay 500 times the 25 jobs and not any for the remaining 13.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. McBrier?
So when is the measurement period? Is it the end of the five-year term or is it yearly?
It is yearly, sir.
So they get paid the $500 per job per year? And if the job doesn't go the full five years, they only get a part of it? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on 5.14? All right, we'll next move to Agenda Item 5.29. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 5.29 is a filing by West Texas Gas. It is referred to as a GRIP filing and GRIP stands for the Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program. What GRIP boils down to is it is a formula-based filing that gas companies are allowed to make to recover capital investment. It is not considered to be a rate case in the traditional sense, although it obviously affects rates, but rather a recovery mechanism for invested capital. Members, as you sit here today as the Lubbock City Council, you have original jurisdiction over gas rates and GRIP filings in Lubbock, Texas. The final jurisdiction is the Texas Railroad Commission. So again, in this case, being a GRIP filing, it is a formula-based mechanism where the gas company will recover a portion of the capital money they have spent over the period. West Texas Gas is requesting on a residential basis, $2.99 a month for a residential customer. Be a little higher for a commercial customer, but that's for residential. Our resolution that we have in front of you is requesting you to pass and thus suspend this GRIP filing for a 45-day period. That statutory period during which time, we can go through and review that filing. We can look for obvious errors in items like that. I do note upfront, in the case of the GRIP filings, and these have been up to the Supreme Court and back, to continue to define them and define them and define them. If the filing is correct, we have almost no ability to produce a change. If it were a full-blown rate case, that would be different. Those result generally in negotiations. In this case, if the formulas are correct and the investment is correct, this is likely to go in as requested. The 45 days gives us a chance to do some due diligence on it.
Ms. Joy?
Percentage of the residences in Lubbock would be affected by West Texas Gas Company GRIP filing?
It's an excellent question to which I do not have the answer. West Texas Gas provides natural gas service to a very small portion of Lubbock.
And the remainder is on Atmos, I presume?
The remainder is on Atmos and there are a few areas where customers can have either or. But the dual areas and the West Texas-only areas are by far the smallest part of the community.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions on 5.29? All right, we'll move to item 5.30. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you. 5.30, we've switched off of gas and we'll move over to electricity. This one's a little bit different. Staff is asking council to pass a resolution to deny the requested rate increase from Southwestern Public Service Company. Before I get far into the details, I do need to note in all fairness that this represents one or at most two total customers. There are almost no SPS customers in Lubbock, Texas. However, when these cases are filed, they are filed across the totality of the SPS service area. So if you move to our west and certainly all to our north, you pick up, you know, Plainview, Amarillo, Borger, Pampa, all of those, they are affected by this as well. So the way that works, all of the cities who are served by Southwestern Public Service Company have created an entity called the Alliance of XL Municipalities. So it's a small group that are representative of a larger group who sit to attempt to review and ultimately negotiate rate increases for electricity through Southwestern Public Service Company. Just as in gas, the city council does have original jurisdiction. The difference is when this goes past the local or the regional area, it lands at the Public Utility Commission to move forward there. This particular case that's in front of us is what I would call a look-back case. So there was a rate increase approved prior and then new law or new regulation allows the electric provider to come in and say, okay, well, I have my new rate, but there was a period of days, I believe it's 155 days in this case, there was a period of days during which we were waiting for an answer. Now that we have an answer, we want to go and look back and try to apply those rates and recover them. Again, this has very minimal impact to Lubbock. It has a larger impact mainly to the cities to the north. Should the council pass this, that does keep all of the cities together and allows those groups most affected to review, to employ consultants, and to negotiate on behalf of their customers.
And I think, Mr. Atkinson, one of the key points on this for council is this basically is a more expeditious process, right? This makes it more expedient of process, so it goes right up to PECT, correct?
It will still go through that negotiated period with the Alliance of XL Municipalities and then straight to the PUC after that.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, council, does anyone see any reason to pull 5.13, 14, 26, and 29 and 5.30 out to vote individually or can we pull those back in as one consent agenda? All right. Excuse me, I would entertain a motion to approve Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.34. Thank you. Ms. Martines-Garcia, did you have a question? All right. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of Agenda Items 5.1 through 5.34, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, motion carries 7-0. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 6 and we will start with Agenda Item 6.1. This is the first of two public hearings on the juvenile curfew ordinance, which is recodified in 2012. The Texas Local Government Code requires the public hearings to be conducted by the city council in regard to the juvenile curfew ordinance and its effects on the community. And we will start first with a presentation from Chief Mitchell. Chief, floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wanted to go over a quick presentation in regards to a bunch of the questions that were asked last week regarding the juvenile curfew ordinance. This is a three-year review and renewal of that ordinance as we move forward. So when we look at the first slide, the curfew ordinance, the number of violations for curfew ordinance only issued by LPD or Lubbock Police Department from 2019 to June of 2022, there were 200 violations issued. 191 of those were issued to juveniles and nine of those were issued to adults, their adult parents. When you look at the time of day that these violations or these citations were issued, 161 of them were issued in the nighttime and 39 of those were issued during the daytime hours. When you look at the majority of the daytime violations, those are usually issued by the ISDs within the city of Lubbock. One of the things that we pulled out of here when we looked at the data is when you look at the nine issue, the nine citations issued to their parents. In talking with my command staff, this is something that we know moving forward, that we need to issue the same amount of citations to those parents that we did to the juveniles. So that's something that we have identified and we're taking the corrective action on that. When you look at, the note at the bottom talks about the agenda item. On the agenda item, it has 198 on those notes. That is because two of the violations actually had two, the two of the citations had two violations on each of those violations. Are there any questions in regards to Slide 1 before I move forward?
Ms. Joy, sorry. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you. Chief, with regard to the 200 total violations, they were just, the juveniles were just cited or did you guys take possession of them and return them to parents? What was the case there?
Those, so when we cite someone, we have to turn them over or release them to an apparent or guardian. So they were cited and released to a guardian. And I'll have some more data later on that will show you kind of how, what those charges were and how they broke down.
Okay, I'll wait for you to do that. Thank you.
And Ms. Joy?
Did you have any repeat offenders in this group?
Oh, that we, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know off the top of my head. It's something we could probably look at and get for you.
Okay. Thanks.
So when you look at, the next slide you see before you talks about the number of juvenile arrests. These are juveniles who have committed a crime and these were juveniles that not only committed a crime, but they committed a crime during the curfew hours of 11:00 PM to 6:00 PM on Thursday and midnight to 6:00 PM on Fridays and Saturdays. We had a total of 254 arrests that occurred during this period and it shows you the days of the week in regards to your bar chart of the purple, red, and green in regards to the days that we had the number of arrests. When you look at the slide, when you look at the right side of the slide, it shows you the total number of charges and this is to June 30th of this year, you'll see 324 charges were issued in regards to those 254 arrests. I want to put one caveat here. When you look at runaway, that is, this is our apprehension of a juvenile taken into custody by us, but it is released to a parent or guardian. That is not a violation of a penal code. It is entered in the computer as a runaway. However, we're not taking that person to, into custody and taking them to a detention center. This is releasing them back to a parent or guardian in regards to those. So if you want to take the runaways out, you're looking at 254 charges of those 241 charges on those 254 arrests. Any questions in regards to this slide? Okay. So the next slide will depict the number of juvenile arrested during the curfew hours, I'm sorry, during all hours of the day of, over the same time period. You'll see that there's 4,687 arrests over the last three and a half years, which resulted in 6,158 charges. Again, when you look at that, 1,443 juveniles for runaway, those were taken into custody and released to a parent or guardian. If you take those 1,400 out, you're at 4,715 charges in regards to that 4,600, basically 4,700 arrest.
Chief, in looking at the numbers for 2022 thus far, because the numbers go from June of one year to June the following year?
No, these are full years, these are full calendar years, January to December. We only stopped it at June 30th because that's where-
Because you don't have more to enter. Okay, then that may answer my question because otherwise it would appear that juvenile offenses have gone down.
Right.
So that's why, that's why I was asking it.
Yes, ma'am.
No problem. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? All right. Thank you. May continue, Chief.
Okay. I wanted to give you guys a view into the number of juvenile victims that we've experienced over the last three and a half years. As you can see, the number of homicide victims that were 16 years of age and younger, we had 11 of those. Aggravated assault victims, we had 630 of those. Robberies, 70. Sexual assaults or rapes were 468. For a total of 1,168 juvenile victims over this time period. These are juveniles that are, and this is for all hours of the day. So when we look at the juvenile enforcement plan, you're looking at directed enforcement on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, midnight to 6 o'clock. The staffing for that would be six total officers, four officers working, or four officers working in two-person teams, looking for curfew violations, and two officers would be assigned to the curfew center. The curfew center would be out of East Patrol Division. It meets the criteria of the ordinance and is centrally located throughout the city of Lubbock. The procedures will be that the violators will be brought to the curfew center, they will be written a citation, the officers of the curfew center will contact their parent or guardian. Once the parent or guardian shows up to that location to pick the juvenile up, they will also be issued a citation. When we looked at the data, we believe the best time to do this would be to have that curfew center June, July, and August. When you look at the data there, and I can show you just a quick slide here. So when you look at juvenile arrests by month and year, this has, you can see that starting in late, in April, moving forward, the numbers rise. But what we really, and that's, the big jump is in 2019. So what we had to do is we had the crime analyst show us the average. So when you look at the average of juvenile arrests during the curfew hours, you can see that June, July, and August, during the summer month when everyone's out, is when we would want to, if you really want to get a good look at the numbers, that's when we think it's best to try this pilot program. You can see September, October, November, the numbers really fall off.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, Chief, the graph, this one and the one you showed before, it says arrests. I just want to clarify, are these criminal arrests or these curfew pickups?
These are, so juvenile arrests during, during curfew, these are arrests.
So these are ones that are going to the detention center?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My other question is, a couple of slides back, for the proposed kind of new enforcement plan, you've got six officers. Are those officers already doing something else? Are these new officers that we're looking, are we going to pull them from something to now put them into like a juvenile unit?
No, this is kind of what we discussed last week. This would be the mandatory overtime assignment. These officers would be working overtime to staff this particular detail.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Ms. Joy?
Chief, I guess I'm a little concerned. If you do this program in, I think you said June, July, and August, the rest of the year, are you looking for kids who are violating curfew?
Yes, these would be the officers that are out there working the streets when they come into contact with them. And that's an initiative on our part to really talk to our officers about, when you see them, identify them and find out, one, how old they are and what they're doing out there on the street. Last weekend, or last week, we also talked about the Enforcement Act- Last weekend, or last week, we also talked about the enforcement activity of our police officers. And I have some of that data that I, we get every month in regards to our executive summary. When you look at our self-initiated activity, it is up over 18%. So our officers are out there working, they're making these stops. So they're, they're doing it, I think it's more incumbent upon us and our command staff to make sure our officers know that, hey, they need to conduct more of these traffics, or more of these contacts, whether they're being in a vehicle or out there on the street when they get calls for service, to see if they're violating the ordinance and issue the citations to them and their parents.
And I guess the reason I'm asking this is, let's say, this is approved tonight, the extension, we have the ordinance tomorrow night, an officer is out, and there's a juvenile who's walking the street at 1:00 in the morning. Are you going to pick him up? What are you going to do with him? Because under the ordinance, you have to have a location where you would take that, that young person.
Right. And that's part of that initial 200 stops that were made earlier. The officer has the discretion to take that person into custody, call their parent, meet them at their house, issue the juvenile the ticket, and issue the parent the ticket. What we're talking about is having a curfew location, the curfew center-
No.
-our collection point for them. No, we don't have that moving forward unless we start that October 1 with the, with the new budget year. You know, again, just like I explained last week, we just don't have the staffing to do that right now.
I guess-
Without it being a mandatory overtime assignment.
My point is, we're still going to be identifying juveniles who are in violation of curfew. You just, except for June, July, and August, you won't be taking them to a location, you will be taking them to where they live, or tell you they live, and releasing to a parent or guardian.
Yes, with issuance of those citations.
Chief, I guess, just looking at the number, if we average up to about 200 tickets issued, that would be in three and a half years, correct?
Yes, sir.
So that would average out to about 4.5, 4.6 per month.
Roughly. And this is without a proactive, you know, curfew center, having officers going out actively looking for them. Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Any, Ms. Joy?
Chief, will you back up your presentation to where you had the bar graph for the days of the week, right there? And what I'm looking at is in 2019, the blue, yeah, those are the blue numbers, and they're much higher than they are in 2022.
And that's why when we talk about the average, when you look at the bar chart, I'm sorry, let me move forward here. This is a prime example. 2019 was a regularly, regular year for America or the world. 2020, we went into COVID. If you look at the 2020 number, you can see there's a big dip in June. So we had our crime analysts average them out, because we knew if you just looked at certain years, depending on the time, of what was going on across the world, those numbers were different. So if you look at 2021, they kind of pop back up, and then 2022, you can see we're kind of averaging where we normally are for that half, the first six months of the year.
I guess what I would like to see is that, that we would make it known to the public that we're going to enforce this ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and in doing that, I would hope that we would be able to help some with gang activity, don't know. But if nothing else, is to prevent some, some young person who is out there at 1, 2:00 in the morning from committing an act for which they would be arrested. I just think it's too important not to pay attention to these juveniles who have either sneaked out, or their parents don't know where they are and don't care. But we've got to get us, we've got to get hold of it. And I think we've not been enforcing the ordinance that we have. I think it's been not one of our priorities, and I get that. And the numbers, you know, when you look at the numbers, you can play with numbers all you want to. But what I am concerned about is one kid, not the numbers so much. If we can get kids off the street when they're not supposed to be there, and not doing good things.
Right. And I don't think that it's not a priority, but what we have, when you look at our call-response time, you know, we've, you know, again, what I talked about last week, you know, we have a growing city, we have additional issues, we have higher priority calls than to have my officers going out looking for 16-year-olds that might be violating curfew. These same 16-year-olds are breaking into cars. That's a higher priority than them being out there just, you know, having a beer, you know, with their buddies. So the guys and gals are out there working hard to reduce crime, but, you know, I agree with you, it's not their priority. They're running from call to call to call right now, and we're trying to fix that. But until we get the staffing to where it needs to be, it's not going to be that officer that's out there on the streets priority. His or her priority is going to make sure no one's assaulting anybody, robbing anybody, racing up and down the street, you know, doing things that hurt the public.
All right, Dr. Wilson?
Yeah, Chief, I just, I have a couple of concerns, just, you know, with, and I think we talked about this last meeting with the program in general. You know, when we look at these charts, kind of like what I was alluding to earlier, I think we're comparing apple to oranges. And I think the mayor kind of touched on this a little bit, that the number of just juveniles that are not committing, you know, a crime, that are not going to go to the detention center is about four a month. I think my concern is, you know, we have repeatedly talked about the LPD being understaffed, and, you know, to me, forcing mandatory overtime on six officers for four kids a month, I just wonder if their time is better utilized, because you say as we're growing, we have more of those serious crimes being committed, those higher priority calls. So I think that's my concern, is do we need to mandatory overtime six guys for four kiddos a month? And maybe the number will be a lot higher, because you're talking about trying to enforce it more. But you can see what I'm saying, when we're looking at these numbers, this is arrested kiddos because they've committed a crime versus just the juvenile numbers we're picking up because they're violating curfew. I just want to make sure we don't confuse the two, because some of the charts are confusing.
Right. And we are talking apples and oranges, talking about the kids that are out there making arrests, and you see that number was over 4,000 versus the ones that are just out there for curfew violations. Because my officers aren't out there just targeting 16-year-old kids, they're seeing if they're violating curfew. They're out there, you know, trying to stop violent crimes. So, so you're right, we are talking apples and oranges. The 90-day trial might show a difference, that if we actively or had officers assigned to do that on a regular basis, that Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, I think those numbers would change.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McBrayer?
I want to make sure I'm kind of right on these numbers. You said about 4,000 juveniles arrested for crimes over that four-and-a-half-year period, juvenile crimes, after you take out the runaways, right? And then about 200, and that's in all hours, not just during-
That's all hours.
-curfew hours. Then you go back, and I think the number was about 240-
241, I believe.
241 arrested, juveniles arrested for juvenile crimes excluding runaways during curfew hours. So it's about 5%. I guess that's kind of counterintuitive to me. I guess I would have thought most of the crime would have been late at night, but apparently most of the crime being perpetrated by juveniles is during the daylight hours or during the early evening.
Whether it be shoplifting, you know, like I say, you look at them, whether they're driving a stolen car, drug charges, assault, you know, they get into a fight, you know, after school or something like that. So there's a, you know, there's a whole list of offenses that they could be arrested for that occur during the daylight hours.
So, I mean, my thought is even amping up our attempt to patrol for curfew violators may not necessarily affect the total juvenile crime rate that much, if only 5% is occurring during those hours.
It may not. I think it goes more to what Councilwoman Joy is talking about, trying about, trying to protect those juveniles as best as we can, trying to keep them under their parents' purview during these midnight hours when a lot of our adult bad actors are out.
Thank you.
Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you. Chief, I have a few things, because basically you said that as much as they can, officers are out there doing it. If we look at creating this team of six officers, they're basically going to be, that's going to be their focus, is looking for those curfew violators, right?
Yes, that would be their responsibility, but I think it's important to understand that it's not going to be the same six officers every night.
Yes.
We're going to share the wealth, and it's going to rotate, you know, from basically the lowest serial number down to the highest serial number, trying to get everyone involved in it. So no one's just strapped with working mandatory overtime.
Okay. So my concern there is, as is some citizens that I've had some conversation with, we don't want any jugging, you know, you know what I'm talking, when I say jugging.
Okay.
Okay? Or picking on young people who are out, or someone who appears to be a young person that's out at a certain time. So that's, that's a concern of mine.
And I think, I went back to our very first slide, and I think when you look at this slide and you see the 191 issued to the juveniles and nine issued to the parents-
Yeah.
-it goes to the mentality of our, of our police officers.
Okay.
They're not trying to harm this family, because each ticket is $146. So they're not trying to double whammy them, they're just trying to get, get the message across that, hey, you need to be more responsive, more responsive for your kids. So I think our officers are doing their best to do the right thing.
Okay. And I believe that, but I just wanted to sit that in front of everybody, that I, that's what we don't want-
Yes, ma'am, you're correct.
-to be, to be the case, any jugging or picking at what appears to be juveniles out at, past curfew. My other question would be, and you may not have had these issues over the past few years, because you're roughly looking at 4.5 kids a month, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What happens, or how do officers handle it at those moments when they cannot make contact with the parents, or in this case, the parents choose not to come and pick up those kids? With it in mind that these are chin offenses, and you can only hold that juvenile legally for six hours. I mean, how do we deal with that, or what has been the plan in dealing with that?
And I believe Assistant Chief White mentioned that last week. Nathan, can you come up here real quick so you're at the mic? Because I don't want to misstate what actually happens to them when we can't get a hold of their parent or guardian.
So at that point, we would have to contact CPS and find a, somebody to come pick them up and go from there. But we couldn't just release them, they have to be released to an adult or CPS.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that point, because, as you stated, it's not a, it's an offense, but it's not a delinquent offense, like you're breaking into vehicles, fade, I mean, UMBs and all of those types of things. I mean, because it happens. Sometimes parents don't come get their kids.
Very similar to a runaway-
Yeah.
...and a parent can't be found.
Yeah, yeah. I guess that my next question is going to be to Judge Hernandez, since he's in the building, as to, I'll let, I'll let you get up here before I pose this question. What happens to-
And I was waiting for you to call me.
What happens to the cases at municipal court? If there is an increase in the curfew citations and whatnot, what does that, what does that do for you all, or do to you all there in municipal court?
By the numbers that I'm seeing, I don't think it's going to put that much of a burden on us.
Okay.
We're going to be able to process them in a timely manner in order to give them their due process.
Okay. I just want to make sure that these are the things that we're looking at, and I know that you guys are, I just wanted to have that conversation upfront, so folks would know, because there are a lot of moving parts that begin to happen, you know? Sometimes we don't think about the fact that mom or dad won't come get little Johnny, and stuff like that, and-
Well, Councilwoman Patterson-Harris, just by the numbers that I'm looking at, I don't think that it's going to affect us much at all. And we'll be able to accommodate whatever cases are brought to us.
Okay. Even if there was an huge influx of these cases, you still be able to have it?
It all depends what, what you mean by huge influx, but, but I think we'll be able to, and to handle them. Sure.
Okay, thank you for your information.
Surely.
Thank you.
All right, just as a reminder to council, does anybody have any other questions, the chief? All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just a reminder, we are not considering any action today. This is just informational, and then we will have the public hearing. So if there's no other questions at this time, and this again is the first of two public hearings, the public hearing is now open. If anyone wishes to speak to the council in regard to the juvenile curfew ordinance, you may do so now. All right, seeing no movement, the public hearing is now closed. Again, this is a public hearing only. We will have the next hearing on September 27, 2022, at our next regularly scheduled council meeting. All right, next, we are moving to Agenda Item 6.2. The local government code requires a public hearing for the city council to consider the annexation of property. Ms. Sager?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This request is a public hearing and first ordinance reading for a proposed annexation of approximately 144 acres located south of East 82nd Street, west of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. The applicant is Lono Combs, LC. They are here today if you have any additional questions. The annexation agreement was approved by city council last month. If this first reading of the ordinance is approved today, we'll bring the second reading forward at your next meeting, and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Our council, if you recall, our first approval was August 9, and that was the first approval, correct, Mr. Atkinson?
Correct.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Ms. Sager?
All right, thank you, ma'am.
All right, at this time, I will open the public hearing in regard to the annexation of an area of approximately 144 acres adjacent to the eastern city limits of the city of Lubbock. That would be south of 82nd Street and west of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the annexation at this time? You may come forward. All right, seeing none, I will open the floor to anyone who wishes to speak in favor of All right, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance and ex the property under 6.2?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank, I have a motion and a second. Does anyone wish to further discuss Agenda Item 6.2? All right, all in favor of annexation and approval of this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a like sign? All right, we are now moving on to Agenda Item 6.3. This is a motion to consider the ordinance. I believe Mr. Richardson spoke of this earlier. This is a request by Delta Land Surveying, DBA beat the heat shading systems for a zone change from Transition District T to Light Manufacturing District. And I believe, Mr. Atkinson, we had a previous reading in August, is that correct? The previous vote was in August, which carried 6-1, is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.3?
Secretary?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the Agenda Item 6.3? Ms. Martinez Garcia?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on the Agenda Item 6.3?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Joy?
Yeah, if Mr. Richardson is here, still here, I hope.
Yes.
There he is. Okay. This is an area where there were some 212 agreements done years ago, which caused it to have this, you know, some are, some tracks are in and some are out. But when you spoke to us earlier, you hit on exactly why I voted against it. out. But when you spoke to us earlier, you, you hit on exactly why I voted against it. M1 is, is a little bit tough when you go from an R1 to an M1. But you just got through telling us that you all don't have any equipment other than a chop saw and a tape measure, something of that nature.
That's it.
And so why do we need an M1?
I have no idea.
I was assuming you were manufacturing the whole shade and
Well, we, we, we bring in components, we cut
And put them together.
We measure, we assemble.
That's all you're doing.
That's it. It is a strip mall, I have a strip mall there. I have a Pilates instructor, a insurance agent, and an interior designer, and myself. And so I'm just adding on, I will have other tenants like that.
And, and that's exactly, you've made my point, is I don't think it needs an M1 designation. It could be done in a C3 even, based on what you're telling, telling us today. So I guess my next question is for Ms. Sager on that issue, because I, I really do, I was thinking, we are, you know, we're manufacturing, you're putting, you know, we've got all this equipment and, so Kristin, can he not do this in, in a lesser than an M1?
You know, with our current code, the way it's written today, I, I would say no, because our code was written in 1975, and any type of assembly, manufacturing, no matter how light it is, really falls into that M1 category, especially if they have detached storage or warehousing that goes along with it.
Do you have any detached storage that goes along with it?
Detached storage?
A detached storage building or warehouse.
I mean, there's a, there's a, a small little building in the back.
That's not attached to your, your main
Right.
Building.
Right. But it's just for storage.
Right.
So if he did, if he did, are you telling me that if he did a C3 or a C4, that he would be in violation?
Yes.
Well, I guess we're gonna have to look at that in the UDC, because that makes no sense. I, I bet there are businesses all over this town that have a chop saw and do exactly what he does, and they're not in an M1.
Now, now the land, I purchased two lot, two acres of land, and on the first acre, which was before I was annexed, we built it like it is today.
Right.
We then added on, and it, and it, and this, the part that was added on is actually in this other piece of land that's kind of in question, that we're trying to add on to right now, so it kind of
Yeah, I understand that.
And so we're just trying to add on a little more.
And to your point, Ms. Joy, I absolutely agree with the UDC, something like this should not require manufacturing, so
No. And the, the reason with M1 is we get all kinds of really bad uses in there. You're not, but that was the question I had, and why I voted against it, was because I thought we could do this in a lesser zone and avoid that M1, because that area out there's a mess, okay? And when we start putting in M1s, then that just opens the door for other M1s, because they will say, well, you got an M1 across the street, or you've got one next door to me. And so I was trying to avoid that, is what I was trying to do. Not objecting to what you do, I think what you do is great, but I, I do have a, have an issue with the UDC, I guess, okay? But thank you for being here, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Is there a motion on I have a motion in a second, thank you. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.3, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, a like sign. All right, motion carries of approval, 7-0. All right, we are next moving to Agenda Item 6.4, which is ordinance second reading of finance. Mr. Atkinson, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. If I could, I'd like to walk through maybe a little bit of the process. You are on the final stretch now for adopting the city's budget, ratifying the budget, and then adopting the tax rate that supports. So with that, a few comments I'd like to make, and then take any procedural questions you may have before you begin your discussion. State law really is pretty prescriptive as to where we are and to where we are going. First, city council must adopt a budget that ultimately is balanced and is fully funded. The tax rate then, that is adopted, is the tax rate that supports that budget. So we cannot end up in a situation that one or the two of those does not match. Sometimes it seems unusual that we do the work on the budget and then turn around and do the tax rate, but we have to adopt a budget first, law requires us to do that. That budget must be balanced, fully funded, and then the supporting tax rate that goes to that is adopted. State law does not provide what I would call the default option on the budget, but it does on the tax rate. So the state's default tax rate is always the no new revenue tax rate. So if, for some reason, not, not the situation we're in here, but if for some reason there was a city council somewhere that just for whatever reason didn't adopt a budget and a tax rate, number one, the city can't meet its obligations. I, I cannot send one penny out the door that's not supported by a budget. But number two, the state's gonna reset their tax rate immediately to the no new revenue rate, and in addition to that, they would then require the city council to do two ratification items within the first five days of your new fiscal year. Just put that out there as kind of the, the far out deal. Also, any tax rate that is adopted ultimately that is over the no new revenue rate requires 60% of the body to approve. So in the case in Lubbock, that would be five members would have to vote to be above no new revenue rate. So it'd be a five to two vote. This is one of those unusual deals, it's not entirely a function of simple majority. Budgets can be adopted by simple majority. Tax rate, other than no new revenue rate, cannot be adopted by, by, by a simple majority with that. So the items ahead of you, 6.4, which will be your continued work on the budget itself, the budget that is up for your consideration today, subject to whatever amends or change you, you may wish to discuss. The budget that's in front of you is the budget that is supported by the no new revenue tax rate. That is item 6.4. Item 6.5 is also a statutorily required item, and it is merely a ratification resolution. So once any and all actions are finished on the budget, votes are tallied, and we will move into item 6.4, or I'm sorry, 6.5. 6.5 is where we say, I voted this way on the prior vote. It, it's not a further discussion or amendment, it is, I did what I did, and move forward. Following that, you end up with the tax rate item. Council, one thing that we have put in place for today, I believe we're going to be able to turn on our electronic voting counters. So when it comes time to vote on any of these three items, it will be in front of you on your device there, that will show up, and then we'll be able to read back and go through those votes as well. So, short version of all of that, and pages and pages of statute and other items. By the end of today, council, we need a budget and a tax rate that will match. So with that, Mayor, I'll stop, take any procedural questions, or we'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Atkinson at this time? All right, is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022-23 budget? I have a, I have a mo, motion. Mr. McBrayer?
I'll give that motion, then.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget. Is there any further discussion at this time? Would it be appropriate to bring any amendments or other things at this time? Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
Mayor, I move to amend the proposed budget in three parts as follows. On Exhibit G, under General Fund, insert the following: Add one deputy register position in vital statistics, increase compensation in vital statistics by $32,270, increase benefits in vital statistics by $22,704. Second, on Exhibit G, under changes due to no new revenue rate, General Fund, increase sales tax revenue, increase 516081 by $54,974 to 571,055, and direct that said increase in funds by, be appropriated, that is, to fund the added deputy register position. And thirdly, that all conforming changes be made to the ordinance and exhibits that are necessitated by this amendment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. May I have your motion, your amendment, please?
I'll give Ms. Martinez-Garcia a second motion and then.
Thank you. Ms. Dr. Wilson, do you have a question? All right, council, I have a motion and a second on an amendment to the proposed budget. It is before you. Is there any discussion on Ms. Martinez-Garcia's motion? Ms. Joy.
Mr. Mayor, I understand what Councilwoman is doing, or attempting to do, is add a, a position and another person to fill that position. My objection to it is that it's set to be paid from sales tax revenue. When we create a position in the city of Lubbock, it's a recurring every year, and we can't, we can't predict what sales tax is going to do. If you listen to the news today, the inflation rate is, is at 8.2%, which is higher than what they had predicted. The stock market took a nosedive today. And when we started out on this process, we were talking about in uncertain times, and we're still in uncertain times. The hospital district here has an eight cent increase based strictly on the fact that it's uncertain times. What is uncertain for the city of Lubbock is the sales tax revenue. We've already begun to see that the margins between what we had predicted, projected, and what we received are beginning to narrow. We cannot continue to push something off on sales tax where we don't know what it's going to be from month to month, and if we continue down this road with inflation being where it is, at least from my perspective, there are a lot of things I won't, I won't buy, because I can't afford it. So we already had one amendment at the last meeting to do the three-month program with the police department for $75,000, that was, they wanted paid out of sales tax. We cannot do that. And what does that tell you, or what it tells me, is this no new revenue rate is gonna cause significant problems as we move forward. So I cannot support this, because if you want another and need another position, it should be coming from the general fund, because we know that next year that person's going to be there, that position's going to be there, and we're going to have to fund it. So I, I can't support it as it's presented.
Ms. Martinez-Garcia.
Mayor, while I understand Councilmember Joy's resistance or uncertainty, one thing that I can tell you is that there's two guarantees in life, and that is birth and death. And this department is vital. It literally lives up to its name, vital statistics. And we currently have four people in positions that are under distress. We need to address this, and I get it, we're at the point now where we've got to vote for this budget, pass it, move along, but I believe that this department, who has not placed someone in a position for 25 years, deserves to meet the needs, the growing needs of this growing city. So that is my point.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez-Garcia. Mr. Massengill.
Mayor, Dr. Wilson was, I think she was
I'm sorry, I think Mrs., all right, Dr. Wilson, the floor is yours.
Ladies first, Mayor. No, I was gonna say, you know, I think this, I agree with Councilmember Martinez-Garcia, that this is a vital position, that this department hasn't had any new positions in over 25 years, and we have looked at numbers that there is increasing demand in this area, and that this position's probably very needed. While I think it's not traditional to pull a position ever out of sales tax, Mr. Atkinson, is it, is it viable that prior to next year's budget, which we can't look at crystal balls and what we're doing right now, but is it a viable situation to be able to look before next year's budget to try to fit this in, in a billion-dollar budget, one new position?
If I can, let me restate the question. Is it possible to do what we would call a mid-year add, to go forward with the budget without this position after we get started, to try to then add that position?
Well, just even look next year at the numbers to make sure, because this year it's coming out of sales tax, if it is approved, to make sure that this isn't a sales tax position next year's budget, that it will be already incorporated into the general fund. Can we look somewhere for $60,000 next year's budget? Is that, is that reasonable?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Oh, I thought Mr. Massengill was going next. Did you, did you shut him down, or what?
You, you trumped him again.
Well, you know, I do that every now and again, but I'll go ahead and make, make my case. I, I have some agreements in, in multiple areas. I understand and agree with the importance of adding that position. I do. I think it is needed, and I think it is vital, to use your terms, Ms. Garcia. I really do. I think it, I think it's much needed in that area, given the demand, the greater demand, folks are still having babies and folks are passing. So those are just only a couple things that they, they deal with. I would call that we do so. My concern is just doing so out of sales tax. I think we need that position, and I think that we, as council members, when things, the decisions, the tough decisions have to be made, we make them, but we make them in a manner in which we can balance things out. I do not believe that the most appropriate way would be to handle this and the additional things that we've already stated, the, the curfew program to continue to add stuff on our sales tax. But I am, I'm very much so in support of, of this position, and I think the most valuable way we can support a vital position is to use the general funds in a manner in which we should, and that's without the no new revenue tax. Thank you.
Mr. Massengill, now.
First, is there anyone else that can trump me before I talk?
Uh, Mr. McBrayer. All right.
Thank you, Mayor. I felt like it was important to give Ms. Martinez-Garcia a second on this, because I think council needs to discuss it. This, let's see, I'll say it this way, in a, in a council-city manager form of government, the city council, per our charter, we hire and set salaries for three people. And most of you in this room know who those three are, the city manager, city attorney, and city secretary, and it's important that we maintain that governance model as we set policy for the city. This decision at the nth hour, without proper preparation or information, I think, is tough. And it's, I don't think anyone's wrong or right, I think everyone's made good points, but I think the council needs a better understanding of how that department works to be able to make a good decision.
needs a better understanding of how that department works to be able to make a good decision. And the Council could do that, I would suggest to the Mayor, at his discretion at a work session in the future. And I would also remind the Council that although we're here to make a decision today on the budget, this Council has discretion throughout the year to call it, you know, you can call an audible, you can make a change. And as we see fit, and we've done that even since this new Council's been seated. And so, it's been a while since I've had, spent quite a bit of time on vital statistics. I think it would be productive to spend some time on it and make sure we have a full understanding of the operations. I have no doubt that there's a need for this position, but I would encourage you to accept an amendment to postpone this until a time when we could have a work session, get a full understanding of the need and the department. And then, just like our governance model tells us, that we make a recommendation to our employee, the City Manager, and the City Secretary, as this falls under, under her authority to add or not add this position.
Call the question.
All right, we have a question called on this. Would we like to yield the floor back to Mr. McBrayer prior to that? And we can finish up discussion? He was on.
Make a motion to amend?
He, he did not make a motion. He, he asked that it be considered, so.
Okay, but you're not making one, are you?
If you want to go ahead, I'll yield the floor to you, Mr. Brayer.
Well, I, I agree that this is probably not the best way to try to bring this matter up this late, but I do believe the case has been made well for the position. You know, I think this is one of those things that we really do need to consider when we look at a budget as an entirety. But I also believe that, I was assured when I made my motion last year, last week, that was more than this for the pool. I talked with the City Manager about whether that would fit in comfortably within the sales tax, and he assured me it would. Much more than that, he was not confident of, but this is below mine. So, I, I feel like this can be done with the sales tax revenue. And so, and I believe the case has been made for it, and we just need to look carefully at putting it in the budget for next year. But I would be for it.
All right. Anything prior discussion on Ms. Martinez-Garcia's motion to amend the proposed budget? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor of approval of the motion to amend the proposed budget in three parts as is presented before you, please say aye. Aye. You ready to vote by electronic on this one? All right. Courtney?
Mr. Mayor, if we do this, then we cannot use the electronic voting system for the full item as amended.
That's, that's what I just, that's, is it possible we could vote on the amendment and make it very clear on this, and then we'll move to electronic version for the? Yeah, all right. Let's ask everyone to raise your hand. All in favor of approval of Ms. Martinez-Garcia's motion to amend, please raise your hand. All right? All against, please raise your hand. All right. Motion to amend carries for three. All right, that will bring us next to the amended budget, proposed budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. We have a motion to approve, we have a motion to approve, and we have a second, and it's been amended, if amended. At this time, Courtney, I think we will start getting that ready for electronic votes. Prior to moving to the vote on the amended proposed budget, we will take any discussion at this time. Any further discussion of the proposed budget? All right. All in favor of approval of the proposed 6.4 as amended by Ms. Martinez-Garcia's amendment, please vote at this time. Yeah, you all voted at the same time. Now you can vote. All right. All right, Council, will please look at the screen and, at your screen to make sure that accurately reflects your vote. I'm waiting for Courtney to give me instructions.
When it came up, it showed secret voting, and that was the only option I had to choose.
All right. All, all that voted in favor, please raise your hand. And all those that voted no, please raise your hand at this time. All right, any questions of anyone at this time? All right, motion carries on the proposed budget for three. Thank you, Courtney. We are moved next to Agenda Item 6.5. Mr. Atkinson, I'll turn it back over to you briefly. You gave us some, some remarks on 6.5. This is just a ratification of the budget that just carried. Is that correct? All right. Anything else I need to make any statements on that? All right. 6.5 is considered the resolution that ratifies the adoption of the 2022-23 budget that raises more tax revenue that was generated in the previous year. All right, since that's the proposed budget, we'll move to ratify the budget. All in favor, do we want to go to secret ballot again, or do we want to do this by? Thank you. Well, because, you know, Courtney wanted to fix these fancy buttons, and so. It's teed up right now. I'm glad to turn the electronics over to you, Mayor Pro Tem. All right. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.5, and even those that are not in favor of Agenda Item 6.5, you may vote now. All right, motion to ratify 6.5 carries for three. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 6.6. The Council will now take a vote on the tax rate ordinance. Is there a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.6? Mr. McBrayer?
I move the City Council to adopt the proposed tax rate that is the no new revenue tax rate of .476762.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Ms. Paz, do you have that ready? Is there any further discussion on Agenda Item 6.6? It went away, Courtney. You may vote at this time.
Mayor?
Yes. All right, Ms. Martinez-Garcia? We've called for a vote.
We've called a vote.
All right, thank you. We've called a vote, if you can vote at this time. All right. Agenda Item 6.6 carries four to three. All right, we will next move to Agenda Item 6.7. This is a resolution on finance. I will turn it over to you at this time, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Appreciate your work. You have adopted all but the last 1% of our annual budget going forward. Item 6.7 is one of the two remaining steps. Item 6.7 is the resolution that confirms the allocation of the hotel occupancy tax to the various recipients. Council, there is no change from what you reviewed in your budget workshops, and this has no changing effect on any of the items upon which you have just voted.
All right, does anybody want to have any questions for Mr. Atkinson on 6.7? And again, if you look at your packet, that's just the allocation of the percentages on the hot tax. All right, if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve 6.7.
Please approve.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.7, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, by like sign? All right, motion carries 7-0 on Agenda Item 6.7. We will now move to Agenda Item 6.8, and I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is your last item. Item 6.8 adopts the electric tariff schedule for Lubbock Power and Light moving forward into the new year.
Hey. Can you hear me? Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yes, this is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 22-23 electric tariff recommended by the Electric Utility Board. There's no base rate increase to any of our rate classes. We're proud to say we've had, we've kept our rate flat since 2017. The majority of the changes on this year's budget are related to budget billing. So, you know, as we transition to the retail market, we want to get everybody out of the budget billing. We want to get those, those outstanding payments that, that are due as, as much as possible. So, that's the majority of the, of that. It's all in your, in your book and your detail. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Ms. Patterson-Harris, do you have questions?
No, I was just saying, Marjorie.
Jo, she just likes to see you turn red.
Yeah, she does. She does. It's all in good fun, though, huh? Good.
All right, thank you. If there's no other questions, do I have a motion? You, you may, I believe we have no other questions for you, Jo. Thank you. Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 6.8? Ms. Joy? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there any further discussion or questions on Agenda Item 6.8? All in favor of approval of Agenda Item 6.8, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, by like sign? All right, 6.8 carries 7-0. All right, it's 4/23 on September 13th, and we are adjourned.